Welcome everyone to this, our last official Isle Palm City Council meeting with this council and myself. Today is Wednesday, November seventeenth at about six P M. I would like to call this meeting to order and acknowledge that both the press and the public were duly notified in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. Before I move on, I'd like to give this council, city hall staff, and all employees a huge thank you. We have all been through the wringer over these last two years. I cannot thank you enough for your public service and a huge thanks to all of our city employees who made us look good. To those council members whom I encourage to run, I will say again, I am sorry for having to ask you to run. But I could not have done this without each and every one of you. Please feel free to join me or not, as I say a prayer to be followed by the correct allegiance and then roll call. Dear wise and loving Father, I thank you for this joyous time of the year when we can all be with our families for the holidays. I thank you for your guidance over these past four years and ask that you look over and equally guide our future mayor and council. Oh heavenly Father, ask that you look over us to look over those who may be sick or those who have lost loved ones and to please comfort their families. Oh heavenly Father, please look over and protect our military and public safety personnel who protect us every day year round. These heroes sacrificed not only their lives, but the time they are not with their families. And please look over their families in their absence and return them home safely. Oh heavenly Father, help us and guide us in making the right decisions for not only now, but for future generations. It is in your name I pray, amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Nicole, roll call please.
Absolutely, Councilmember Pounds.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Bell.
Here.
Councilmember Buchanan. Councilmember Ward. Councilmember Moy.
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman.
Here.
That one wasn't me. Councilmember Popson.
Here.
Mayor Carroll.
Up here.
You have coral.
Okay, um, do we have any citizens' comments?
Yes, sir, Ms. Nemus has signed up to speak.
Okay. Thank you for coming.
I appreciate, my name is Glenda Nemus and I'm a full-time resident of the island. And I really appreciate you all giving me an opportunity to speak on your farewell meeting. I think mostly it's just important to get this in the record so that the next council will be aware that this might be an issue that we can work on. And I'm here to speak about setting standards and expectations by perhaps Isle of Palms adopting a local code of ethics and conduct for our elected officials and employees. Now, I want you to know, I don't believe that anyone that's elected or employed by the city comes to us with any sort of integrity problems. This isn't what this is about. The world in general has, is changing, there's a proliferation of digital uses. There are lots of questions about how to use digital media and lots of problems that are arising with it. We freely exercise our freedom of speech on this communication mode. And this has led to a proliferation of actions backed by questionable personal accountability and ethical decision-making. People tend to do things online and social media that I don't think they would do if they were in the room with you. So a lot of cities have adopted and maybe even before the proliferation of digital guidelines with sanctions and a code of ethics that gives a box to work within. And it just clarifies and draws the line of what would be considered ethical. I'd like to tell you that I do have a personal reason for coming and talking to you about this because just recently, Councilman Ryan Buchanan took a letter that I sent to you all to cancel. It is public record, but he took the initiative to put it on his private Facebook page.
Please, this is part of our, and what you're talking about, we try not to call out council members personally.
Okay, alright, I won't use. Okay, alright, so that did happen to me and I sent a private message to this council person saying, you know, that the assertions that were put after my letter were not what the intent of the letter was. It clearly was about safety and it was turned around to be discrimination against blue collar workers. It led to a lot of people making really nasty comments about me on that Facebook page, which of course the assertions were not correct at all. So there's also been a lot of divisiveness on another councilman's page that a lot of people in the community have been very concerned about, things like petting wildlings against the rest of the island and so forth. And we, we really would like, a lot of people have told me they would like to see this sort of thing end, as I'm sure council would. So that is why I'm bringing this up. I, I have looked online and cities all over have put up notes, notices, and codes of conduct and ethics. I encourage you all to look at it and perhaps the next council as well and to perhaps consider adopting that. Thank you very much.
Do we have anybody else?
Yes, sir.
Okay, moving on, consent agenda, approve of previous meetings minutes.
Motion to approve. Just one minor correction, if I may. Yes, in the public safety section, there is, under the ordinance for dangerous dogs, Nicole.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Ward made a motion to approve the changes and Councilmember Ward seconded the motion. Obviously cannot second his own motion, so you might want to correct it, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, go.
Councilmember Pounds.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Bell.
Aye.
Councilmember Moy.
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman.
Aye.
Councilmember Popson.
Aye.
Mayor Carroll.
Aye.
All in favor.
Thank you very much. Moving on to reports from standing committees, ways and means.
Thank you, since we just finished ways and means, we'll be brief, Amy, if we can have the financial slides up. And if there are residents tuning into this meeting that didn't see the last meeting, I would encourage you to go see it because it's got much more detail in the ways and means meeting, but quickly we'll look at our financial results through October thirty first. Revenue through then is about six point one million, expenses about four point four million, so not anything too out of line. We talked about business license and the timing and the flow of that, given the change in the state law this year. So really everything's pretty much in line from an expense and revenue standpoint. Next page, you'll see our fund balances. City has about twenty eight point eight million in cash deposits. Amy, nice shade of blue right there, I like it. I'm good with it. So about just under twenty nine million in cash deposits, four point seven are unspent bond proceeds and about ten million is restricted for tourism-related expenses.
Does that mean we're in blue?
We're in good black.
It's not red.
An outstanding.
Amy, if you don't go ahead and go to Desiree's Capital Projects, that'll be fine, sorry about that. So Mayor, real quick, we'll do a capital projects update, again, we just had this in ways and means. Some of our restaurant folks are here, so I don't need to give their update, probably they may do that themselves here in a moment. But just on the Marina Restaurant siding installations complete, metal roofing's going on this week, A C unit to get crane to the roof this week. Sprinkler H V A C ductwork scheduled to be completed this week as well. I hear tile is in from late breaking news for that. So really, if you haven't been down in a while, go down, it looks, it looks fantastic with the paint on it. And once the metal roof gets in place, significant aesthetic changes to the exterior of the building. Photos that Desiree has included, I think thanks to Kevin, most likely, probably.
Those are a little old, they're about two weeks old, so more work is.
I know it's happening so fast right now, it's hard to keep up. Marina Dock rehabilitation, looking to get potable water for the charter docks. That'll probably all happen in late January, just to do just the timing of other work that's happening. Diamond dredging has two additional loads coming, hopefully will start soon. You can see the positioning and such to get ready to build the fuel dock and fuel hut that's going on at the Marina. Phase three drainage, we'll have a vote on that in just a minute with regard to the outfalls at thirtieth and thirty six. We had two bids for that and are ready to release and contract with, with one of those bidders. And then phase three drainage internal projects, all of that has been completed. And I think Desiree, if I remember right, it's a final walkthrough this week.
That's correct.
Desiree, anything to add to any of that speed, speed update?
You've covered it all.
Last item right there, Amy, wage and compensation analysis. We've talked about this for a number of months and this is an item we just approved in ways and means. The last, I guess, two months in ways and means meetings, we've been setting the foundation as far as the research has been done. We use an external consultant of Evergreen who has been a great partner with us. They looked at seventeen or eighteen municipalities to compare where our starting salaries are. And we've looked at about eight or nine different options with regard to how to implement, at what level to implement. And here's what we've decided on. Option will include for our general employees, the range penetration capped at a midpoint with a seven and a half percent raise cap and a minimum of three percent. Police and fire, we've got a, we're implementing a step plan, all of this is effective on one one of twenty two. So what this means, particularly from a public safety standpoint, which was one of the top priorities as we started this wage and comp study, was our starting wages for public safety staff will be in the top tier, so the highest compared to the other municipalities in the low country. I think it's only Hilton Head will have a higher starting salary for one side of the public safety house to fire, I believe, if I remember right. So otherwise, our starting salary for those particular positions will be the highest in the low country. So that's, that's a good goal that we sought out to start with and one that we're implementing. Ninety-eight percent of our employees will receive, be receiving some type of wage adjustment with the average adjustment being five point eight seven percent. One of the items that came up during the wage and comp survey was our leave policy is pretty good bit behind and antiquated compared to some of the other municipalities that we looked at. And that'll be an item for council next year to take a look at, that should be a pretty quick and easy fix. So next page, Amy. Thank you. So again, this is, will be implemented for fiscal twenty two or start one one twenty two. We can be covered in a, from a wage standpoint or an overage standpoint from what we already had included in the fiscal twenty two budget along with our savings due to our current vacancy rate. And again, with it just being effective one one of twenty two, it's only six months of impact in our budget. For fiscal years twenty three and beyond, what this is going to cost us, if you will, over and above what we have in our forecast is anywhere between two hundred and fifty thousand and three hundred thousand. And how we're going to pay for that is listed here on the screen. Well, fact, right now, we assume full occupancy, if you will, full staffing always, which is not reality by any stretch for us. We're going to assume about a ninety-two percent staffing rate, which will yield us about a hundred thousand dollars annually. We're going to look to transfer in additional money from tourism funds to cover eligible personnel expenses. And that'll be about a hundred and seventy thousand, so we, with all these changes, it, it obviously exceeds our forecast. We're plugging it with these two options that we have here on the page. Amy, go one more, if you don't mind, please. The I chart test is a whole lot of numbers that's online and it's in the package and you can take a look at it. But the, the yellow highlights are really where the two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars over our forecast is coming from. And so the top yellow line is salaries, the second yellow line is wages, I mean, is benefits. Third yellow line is, is the total out overage, so two fifty to three hundred thousand in any of our out years out through fiscal twenty six. Yes, sir.
Do you need a motion? I'll make a motion to approve the plan as recommended.
Second.
Any other questions, Congress? Sorry, Mayor, that's your, that's your job, sorry.
No, I was just, I actually kind of thought you were going to make the motion, I was telling John, you need to make that second there.
First, Personnel Committee's had a lot of work in this.
No, we, we discussed this in ways and means, we've discussed it ad nauseam for the better part of a year in both ways and means and Personnel Committee. So it's good to see the outcome of the, the final product, near, near it at least, from a wages and compensation standpoint. And just to reiterate, we're, we're, we're at the tops when it comes to starting wages for public safety. It's awesome.
Yes, ma'am.
I know I had some words at our earlier meeting, but I think it's worth reiterating. Very proud of this council and this community for stepping up for our employees and for the future by taking this direction and, and being a leader. And as I mentioned before, not just a leader in the profession, for competing with other departments for, but in being competitive and keeping people in the profession, especially when it comes to public safety. And thank you again for all the hard work that went into this.
I'll make one little comment, you know, as I said in the very beginning, it's the city employees that make us look good. And in our public safety, when they put on those uniforms and go to work, they don't know if they're coming home. So my hat's off to y'all, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Nicole?
Councilmember Pounds.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Bell.
Aye.
Councilmember Moy.
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman.
Aye.
Councilmember Popson.
Aye.
Mayor Carroll.
Aye.
All in favor.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, we'll just keep rocking, we've got about five other items to approve real quick. And again, not trying to cut conversation short, but we just had all this conversation in ways and means. Consideration of purchase of one Ford F- one fifty police responder in an amount not to exceed forty-four thousand. And you can see where those budgeted items are, so we have a motion and a second.
Motion, second.
Desiree, anything you want to add to that?
No.
Good. Okay.
Any questions? Here and none, Nicole?
Councilmember Pounds.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Bell.
Aye.
Councilmember Moy.
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman.
Aye.
Councilmember Popson.
Aye.
Mayor Carroll.
Aye.
All in favor.
Just so the public knows, we discussed this before and there's a lot of discussion. And so this is a pretty quick way to go about it, so anyway, moving on.
Yep, thank you. Third item is consideration of purchase of a Polaris G E M low speed vehicle in an amount not to exceed nineteen thousand. Again, you can see where those budgeted items are coming from.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Questions, thoughts, comments?
Here and none?
Councilmember Pounds.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Bell.
Aye.
Councilmember Moy.
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Popson.
Aye.
Mayor Carroll.
Aye.
All in favor.
Thank you very much.
Next item is consideration of replacement of twenty ten Ford F- one fifty and a two thousand eight Ford F- two fifty in an amount not to exceed forty-four thousand per vehicle. Again, you can see the budgeted line items there, so a motion and a second.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Questions?
That was the F- two fifty is being replaced with an F- one fifty.
That's correct.
Any questions? Here and none, Nicole?
Councilmember Pounds.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Bell.
Aye.
Councilmember Moy.
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman.
Aye.
Councilmember Popson.
Aye.
Mayor Carroll.
Aye.
All in favor.
Item five is consideration of approval of a contract quality enterprises in the amount of two point two seven million for the construction of phase three outfalls at thirtieth and thirty-sixth Avenue. Again, you can see where those budgeted line items are coming from, so motion and a second.
Motion to approve.
Questions?
One quick comment, when some of us ran four years ago, this was like the number one priority item. So it is really kind of cool that we're sitting here in our last official meeting, getting this done. So Mayor, I'd ask to congratulate you on running on that platform as one of the key tenants and us actually getting it done.
And just for everybody to know, the other bid was over three million, so. Okay, any other questions?
Wish we could have had, sorry, John.
Yeah, so go ahead.
I wish we could have had forty-first outfall included, but you, you all know the permitting process that happened here.
I'll chime in just to say, we do not talk enough about what we have done with drainage the past four years. It's, I think we've made an extraordinary leap in keeping this community, protecting sustainability for the future.
Thank you very much.
I was just going to say one thing, I, I think this is somewhere between fourteen and eighteen permits, so.
That's correct.
Rough, so when, when you wonder why projects take so long, those in the public, we, we can't just waiver, we can't just say, we're going to do this, let's get the money and do it. We have to collaborate with a lot of other agencies, so the red tape is frustrating from every angle.
And so what you saw by this government, not this government, but bigger governments, Nicole?
Councilmember Pounds.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Bell.
Aye.
Councilmember Moy.
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Popson.
Aye.
Mayor Carroll.
Aye.
All in favor.
Thank you. Mayor, last item is discussion and consideration of providing city cell phones to all council members. Don't have a motion and a second, I'll give a little.
Motion to approve.
Second.
So right now, the mayor's role is the only one that has a cellphone paid for.
Nope.
Is not even today.
Could.
Could.
My phone is untouchable.
Mayor Carroll elected not to receive that, but we do include that in the budget.
Thank you, sorry. Didn't mean to attribute it to expenses.
No, no, I just.
So we've had a lot of conversations, mayor's brought this up originally and some of the new council members coming in in January brought it up. And we have had a significant number of Freedom of Information Act requests in the last eighteen, twenty-four months. And my hope is this will make it easier for us to comply and reply and respond to those by having a separate cellphone for our, for our council members. So I think it's a prudent thing to do, I think it's a wise thing to do, let's try it for a year, see if it does improve our turnaround times and we'll take it from there.
You know, just to chime in, on one of those freedom of information requests, they had to go through my cellphone over eight thousand texts and emails. And they found that I'm true to my word, I may be a little funny, but I was out of trouble. So again, I think this is the smart thing to do. No one else? Nicole?
Councilmember.
Oh, so I'm sorry.
Did you want the motion to include an amount?
I did, sorry, so we currently, who will put this back out in the form of a motion in a second, it's, phones will be free, it's thirty-five dollars roughly per line, so about three hundred and fifty dollars per month to cover this expense. Sorry, thank you. Whoever made the motion in the second, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
And Rusty, I think.
No, Mayor Carroll.
Mayor.
Yeah.
Councilmember Pounds.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Bell.
Aye.
Councilmember Moy.
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Popson.
Aye.
Mayor Carroll.
Aye.
All in favor.
Thank you very much.
That's it, Mayor.
Any more? All right, moving on, public safety.
Okay, the Public Safety Committee meeting was held ten A M Wednesday, November tenth. All committee members, Bell, Pounds, and Ward were present. We had citizens' comments, first comment, actually acting as a citizen, was a member of the Lowvelllo Volunteer Board, Councilman Streetman. So we read into the record, I'm not going to read, but a very long dissertation, if you will, on the quality of the Lowvelllo event and its meaning to the community and to the cancer fund for which it is intended to raise money. And I would just encourage people to read that without reading it here, but thank you for submitting that. We had Julie Nessler spoke about the successful fundraising, the importance of the event and the encouragement of getting the future council and the future, future community and present community involved in that effort as it has raised a significant amount of money through the, right now, we've had it for three years. Actually, that's quite progressive, yeah, three years running and keeping that going forward. Gary Nessler spoke thanking the members of the Public Safety Committee, service to the community and also for the Public Safety Department, noting several employees by name and an incident which we'll cover a little bit later that happened on the connector for outstanding efforts. We had Jonathan Schwartz from Lucan Ali's who had expressed concerns about the Lowvelllo event, also have an opportunity to speak to the committee about his concerns. I think those concerns, I want to say have been addressed, will be addressed, some of them certainly valid in terms of the way that we look at future events as such at Front Beach. interim chief Briscoe gave a report highlighted the events, the work of the fire department, notably the I O P connector walk and run, a birthday party at recreation, national night out, farmer's market, Halloween carnival and parade, as well as responses to calls such as motor vehicle accidents on home and medical calls on Cameron. Police Chief Cornet reviewed the activities, very similar connector walk and run, national night out, D E A National Take Back Drugs Day. I believe that was a first for us this time in the community. A fundraiser at Chick-fil-A, the farmer's market, Halloween carnival, the parade. I want to highlight, again, participating in Toys for Tots. It's that time of year that people should reach into their generosity pockets and drop off Toys for Tots. And we're going to have a collection point, is correct, chief. Public Safety Building will be the collection point up until December fifteenth. Officer Santelli was recognized by Mount Pleasant Chamber of Commerce as the first responder of the month, notably recognized by Mount Pleasant for that as an Isle of Palms officer. He spoke briefly about an incident on the connector where public safety employees went out of their way. We actually had a vehicle accident which ultimately resulted in a person stuck in the marsh, unable to get to by traditional power boats and had to call in an airboat from Charleston County for the rescue. I think it was forty-two degrees, so not, not a good time to be in the water, unreachable. Extraordinary effort because they didn't just look at the, the vehicle on the connector, they did, as they should, a, a good surrounding. That, that person frankly probably would have perished had it not been for some heroic efforts, so commendable. We had seven hundred and twelve calls for service in October, significantly lower than last year, but four golf carts, two gun violations, four DUIs. Coyote sightings were lower, sixty-seven and thirty-eight parking tickets up from last year from fifty-nine, sixty. And I, I think notable and part of this salary discussion that we're having, we are making progress and filling open positions. I think we came into the month with six open positions. I think you've got three of, I'm looking at chief, we've got three of those filled. I, I think just the general environment and the tone that we're setting for moving forward is going to be significant in attracting people and keeping those people. And I thank both departments. If you look four years ago at the reporting that came out of police and fire, it was stacks of data that nobody read. And anybody that's interested in what's going on in the island, the reports are outstanding. I, I mean, they're, they're concise, they're, they're, they have detail, but they have the right amount of detail. And anyone that says that we're not reporting that detail frankly hasn't looked at the reports. An old business, we had discussion and consideration of proposed amendments to the dog ordinance to include the restriction of vicious or dangerous dogs. I think my four years on council, this has been topical every year. And it's a difficult subject. The ordinance includes definition of dangerous dogs in a penalty section. And we had asked for advice from the chief on how do we do this, how do we actually have an ordinance, no pun intended, that have some teeth in it, that, that gives us some ability to enforce differently than what we've done before. We think we have that at this point. There's a section that addresses the definition pertaining to a dangerous dog, a dog which makes an unprovoked attack that causes bodily injury to a human or domestic animal that would fall in line with those animals that we were hearing concerns about that were attacking or biting. It gives us something to divine them and, and address as these incidents instead of just a simple fine and, and frankly, a walk away. So I, I don't know appropriate, if, if the chief wants to comment at all on, on what we're doing, but we have a, a dog ordinance in front of council at this point that I think, you know, should pass. And Desiree, you might want to comment on where we're at.
Yeah, we, we can certainly have the chief provide some context now or.
I think that's appropriate, so I'm looking at one of our residents in the audience that definitely has an interest in this subject.
Good evening. In reference to this ordinance, what we have typically seen for when we have a dog bite that takes place, we always tend to go to our leash law violation and looking at, you know, were they off leash, were they on leash, were they even in violation of that ordinance? And really what we found was that all of our neighboring jurisdictions have a specific ordinance that addresses those types of incidents. And it's different than a leash law violation. You could have both violations at one time, but you certainly could have somebody that's not in violation of a leash law, but still be in violations of a dog that is unprovokingly attacking somebody or another animal. This ordinance will clearly give us a definition to address those incidents and the steps that will be taken should a dog be declared as a vicious or dangerous dog so that we can track those individuals and track those dogs in the future. It'll give us the opportunity to actually address the root cause there, that.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
So I, Councilmember Ward did make a motion, that motion was approved. I don't recall who seconded it, but because it says Ward seconded his own motion, but it was seconded and passed unanimously.
And we got a bill.
We have a, a first reading tonight on that. We then moved on to update on the study of the modification of the I O P connector. And Administrator Forgoso commented that, you know, that we, we, we are making some level of progress in that we. Administrator Fergoso commented that, you know, that we, we are making some level of progress in that we have a scope provided, I believe from the engineering firm that we were working with. But I think, you know, the overall is, you know, where are we with SEDOT on the connector and the actions that they took? And what's the path forward for the future council? And I spent some time stating why I made a motion in the last council meeting, and I'll just restate that. Whether or not the future council chooses to do a study on their own, I think the point needed to be made that when we have a Secretary of Transportation that takes some fairly egregious actions with off-island groups that are political in nature by presenting signs to the beach access group or signs to Senator Grooms and doesn't act in an unbiased way with this community, it is very difficult to ask any of us on council or anyone in the community to say that this is fair treatment for something that frankly, that connector should not have been restriped basically over a weekend without the engagement of the city, right? Future council would deal with that issue. I wanted to tee that issue up. I don't personally believe and stated in those comments, it'll be easy to find another engineering firm, that it will necessarily be affordable. But if we're to have a path forward as a community in working proactively with SEDOT, there needs to be a behavioral change from SEDOT. And, you know, frankly, I challenge the next council and happily pass that baton to them to figure out whether that can be done or not. And, you know, obviously, the alternative path is legal. As departing council members, I think we'd rather see it done cooperatively, but I don't know. I mean, we have not had practice. And I'll leave it at that for the comments that I made during the committee meeting. I will state, since our mayor-elect stated that, you know, his desire is to work cooperatively with SEDOT, that, you know, trying to pursue a separate path is difficult and probably unaffordable. We then moved on to an after-action discussion of the Lovello bike ride. Councilmember Ward had expressed concerns. He asked that this item be put on the agenda about the event. There was a lot of noise on social media about this event that I don't personally believe is very accurate. And I'm gonna do this in the kindest way that I know how, and it's not complicit with any resident comments. But I commented that when I see fellow council members participating in social media activity that is not accurate or honest, whatever the motive, it's just simply wrong. So we had our non-resident Mr. Kraus, who likes to take personal attacks on me and other council members trolling on social media, asking which public safety committee member basically harmed our businesses at Front Beach. My comment was, first of all, we all have an equal vote, an equal voice. Anyone on these committees can put an item on that committee agenda. Whether I like it or not as chairman, it doesn't matter. They have that equal right and an equal vote. We have all supported the Lovello event. We have on almost every issue except for one nay vote on closing the connector been unanimous as a council in supporting our Front Beach businesses. So when I read Councilman Ward saying that it's Randy Bell's fault for this, I take extreme offense. And what I said was prior to joining this council, who's been pretty congenial through the years, when I read Facebook comments that blame us inaccurately, any of us individually, that discussion and dissension on council belongs up here in the public and it ends up here in the public. It doesn't go out on social media with false accusations. So I did recommend, and I hope our mayor-elect brings it forward, that there is a code of conduct. This discussion occurred with the council prior to us being seated, and it was felt at the time it was unnecessary. I do believe we need it now. I mean, I've spent the last two years being attacked personally. I'm not on social media. I can't stand it. But when I read the vile commentary and the gross accusations directed at many of us, it's time for the community to stand up and this council to stand up and say, we've had enough, we're done. We're not doing this anymore. So I will leave it at that. Discussion of golf cart regulations, a kinder subject. So Councilman Ward rightfully asked that we look at golf cart regulations because we all see children dangling off these carts. They're not seat belted, they're in their parents' laps. The same parents that would not dare put them in an SUV without being in a car seat have no problem with them hanging off the back of a golf cart. Chief, I want to put you on the spot again, but it's my last opportunity to put you on the spot again. God, we looked at this issue, you know, can we enforce it? What can we do? And I think the general consensus is not a lot. Public awareness more than anything. You know, we'd all like to sometimes, you know, hit those parents over the head and go, are you watching what you're doing? But the chief's comment, unfortunately, you know, the laws don't pertain to seat belts and golf carts. It only pertains to the operations of those golf carts at night. So we don't, we don't have an opportunity within the law to do much different than we're doing. The only thing going forward is, you know, to ask the state attorney general for a different opinion and try to pressure the state, recognizing that it's an increasing problem. Anything to add to that, chief? Okay, well, thank you. I give you that opportunity though. The other items, we've already covered in the Ways and Means, basically purchasing new vehicles and things like that. And so ends this report and my last report on the Public Safety Committee agenda. Thank you.
Any questions? There are none. Moving on. Public Works.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am replacing Councilperson Chair Ward for this presentation, being vice chair of the Public Works Committee, since he had a similar, he had a conflict during this period of time tonight. So anyway, I'll take this. We met as a Public Works Committee at ten AM Monday, November the fifteenth, just a couple of days ago. All council members were present, along with many on our staff were there as well, including Department Head, Director Pitts, Director Carr, Administrator Fergoso. We did have a citizen's comment that was read into the record, and that was from Kelly Thorvilsen of the South Carolina Aquarium. It was about her concern for the ordinance twenty twenty-one dash fifteen, which we'll be discussing later, and that's in regard to the all the different to-go items, that sort of thing for the restaurants and the supply chain issues we're having. So more on that later. So she did make a, make a comment that's on the record there and acknowledging that the food-to-go container portion of the ordinance was certainly something that needed to be dealt with, but she wasn't so sure about single-use plastic bags. That was the summary of her comments. On the department reports, we had Director Pitts, Assistant Director Acero, good report for both of them. Garbage collection for October was average, yard debris collection was down a bit. Looks like we got the island cleaned up pretty good these days, all caught up. You know, I'm not saying that there may be a pile of something out there. But he'll get to it very quickly, guarantee you that. And then Assistant Director Acero reported on a number of items that got completed by EDs and the Public Works Department, a number of things that have been, that have been worked on and being worked on. Very positive report. It looks like we've got a lot of things that will be happening during the off-season here that will make us look even better as we move into spring and summer of next year. And we had some Moby Mats that have been installed on both sections before and after the boardwalk. This is at thirty and forty-sixth Avenue. We've had well lights, Public Works installed fifty well lights at the front beach to restore the lighting that was originally there. And they're assessing the beach access paths and determining which ones need further cleaning. And they've already cleaned a couple of them as well, trimming back brush and shrubbery, that sort of thing. And we had some discussion too about the responsibility for the cleanup of the Isle of Palms Connector. Right now, we do that. Our Public Works Department does, and along with the company that we have contracted to, to help us clean each month as well. But we clean the entire connector. And obviously, the City of Isle of Palms only goes to the flag post up there, basically where our city limits are. But we go ahead and we clean the rest of it all the way to the mainland, and we take that responsibility upon ourselves. And we just made the the point in the committee that it would be really good to get a neighboring municipality such as Mount Pleasant to maybe help us some with that, with the cleaning. So Desiree Fergoso is going to reach out to them and see if we could work out something where there'd be sort of mutual agreement that they could help us some cleaning. We had update on Phase Three Drainage Project. We've talked some about that already earlier tonight, it's on record. We've seen it Ways and Means, we touched on it earlier, so that's all handled at this point, or at least in the, you know, the, looking good for what we approved tonight. We had update discussion on the golf cart path along Ocean Park Plaza. We had good news there that it looks like that we're going to be allowed to remove a portion of the curb up here. And that's right there, Ocean Park Plaza. As you enter the plaza, it kind of drops off and it's pretty dangerous for golf carts, and golf carts go along there all the time. So the way this work would be done, which is nominal cost of about three thousand dollars, you know, we should be able to make that a much safer area there for golf carts to go back and forth. So new business, discussion in consideration of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash fifteen. We will handle that later in the evening. So I won't do anything on that other than the note that we mentioned the other day that we needed to bring it to City Council tonight for approval. And we had some conversation about, about that also as to how that would look. It had some conversation about amendments as well. And let's see. The consideration of approval of contract for quality enterprises, an amount of two point two seven million. We handled that earlier tonight, so I won't touch on that any further. And we had a discussion that was on the agenda in regards to alternatives for, to gravity sewer. And it was really discussion only. Councilmember Smith had brought that to the table and we had some open discussion about it. And Douglas Carr was involved in that discussion as well. And he was going to take the information that was provided by Councilmember Smith and make sure that the Water and Sewer Commission got it and it be part of the monthly discussions they have going forward. So we'll see how that works out. It's not, not a plan to put sewer in. At this point, it's just information about what other alternatives are in regards to what we have now in gravity sewer on part of the island. So we have set a date for the January twenty twenty-two meeting, but we, that will be determined in the future, obviously. So therein, that ends the report, Mayor.
Great report. And any questions? I do have one question.
Okay.
I think you said forty-sixth Avenue for the movie map. Was that forty-second Avenue?
Maybe that's a typo here.
No, actually, he did say that.
It's forty-sixth.
Yeah, he did say that. I mean, I went back and listened to it. He did say forty-sixth.
I think we're referring to forty.
Yeah. Was it forty-second?
Cause I saw that movie map down there.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, he did.
I'm sorry, brought it up.
No, that's okay.
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 No other questions? Moving on. Thank you for a great report. Recreation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We met on Monday, November eighth with our full committee, which includes Councilmember Cannon, Pounds and myself, and as well as our Director of Recreation and City Administrator on hand. We have a citizen's comment from a speaker who came to talk with us, Phil Antman of Salt Marsh Surf, a surfing instructor that has been out there taking advantage of our pilot surfing instruction program. And he spoke, as we have an ordinance later, that we will be having second reading in regard to extending that surfing program for another, or the allowing of surfing instruction on the beach for another year. We're not officially connected to those who run lessons out on the beach, but we are allowing it. The ordinance, we have discussed relaxing some of the recommendations about how many hours we have per day that we allow an instructor to be out there as well as the number of participants that we have in class, as far as class size. And what we wound up arriving on with some input from Mr. Antman was to increase the number of hours per day to four hours allowed per instructor and the class size to eight participants. It is currently four. We had a class size restriction of four per instructor and a limit of four as well as the number of hours of instruction that they could be out there were two hours. So on both counts for we will still have a four to one ratio per instructor, but you can have a group size of up to eight.
Correct. The first version of the ordinance that was approved last month included a maximum of twelve allowable on the beach. The committee recommended dropping that back to eight, but increasing the hours from four to two. I'm sorry, two to four.
So that way, the, the groups will not become too cumbersome or there'll be hopefully a less of a feel of commercialization in the moment and also a better experience for anyone receiving surf instruction. It won't get too crowded, essentially. But it will allow some more flexibility for someone who's providing surf instruction to be out there for a longer period of time. We also, we heard from our director Paige with her usual report. Let's see. Basketball season has cranked up. Exercise classes, tennis and pickleball, as well as key majors are all going well. So I feel like we're getting back to some normal. And we are also, big news for the recreation staff, we are transitioned to online registration, which will be much more seamless and efficient for the staff and hopefully some bonus for, while people were able to do some online registering already, this will hopefully improve the experience for anybody who is signing up for classes. We had successful events in October, too many to count. I guess we're into November, so we've discussed some of these already. But the Halloween Parade and Carnival, I believe, came at the end of the month and it's definitely worth noting that that was spectacular. And we have reiterated that the Halloween Parade is one of the good things that has come out of COVID, a COVID adaptation that we hope will live on and expected to live on. And it was even better this year than last year. Also, the carnival, since we were allowed, we opened up to more of a carnival this year, which we didn't do last year, but kept it outside. Also allowed like greater participation, I believe, than in previous years when we've tried to fit most of it inside. Having it outdoors, I'm not even sure if we have an estimate of how many people participated, but it was a great event. The staff is brainstorming ideas for a future Doggy Day at the Recreation Center, which usually happens in February. And then otherwise, we we talked about returning to Sunday Recreation Center hours, which I'll remind those of you on council who were here, that was one of the first things that we did four years ago, was to expand to include Sunday hours of open gym and have the Recreation Center open. With COVID, because of staffing issues, we're not currently open on Sundays, but there is a hope that once we can figure that staffing comes out, we will get back there as soon as possible. So people can recreate on a, on a day that they are, have extra spare time to get to the gym. We also talked about suggestions for next, for the twenty twenty-two Recreation Committee and set a carryover note for them that includes a return to Sunday Recreation Center hours, as we've discussed. But also with the recommendation that there will be two hours on the front end for kids only, essentially. And then allow some open gym time after that. So in the past, it was reversed and kids were getting a little bit squeezed out by the adults in that, the way it was before. And recommendations to pursue more paddle sport access and opportunities around the island. Consider the creation of a community garden and reassessing recreational needs of residents with some surveying and reviewing of the long-term capital plan for the department. Otherwise, we, I'm sorry, we also discussed the beach wheelchair program. While this is, I believe, been addressed to public safety, we talked about the possibility While this is, I believe, been addressed to public safety, we talked about the possibility for eventually having, yes, we, the, we have a exhibit, we have an example of a, uh, one of the new wheelchair, beach wheelchairs that, uh, should be arriving. They've arrived. Obviously they're here. Um, yes, wheel it around. Uh, so this is really exciting.
John's our model.
And, and I can't take credit for this because really a lot of this work has been done in the public safety committee. But again, uh, we discussed as we expand, hopefully expand that program, not only offering these wheelchairs, uh, through the public safety department, um, and where they're going to be keeping track of them, but also having the opportunity to offer them at the recreation center. So there's more opportunities in different places that people can access them. But, um, yes, that's, I haven't actually really had a chance to take a look at it.
I've started.
Go for a ride.
And, and so these chairs will be available, though we're starting out with three chairs. They, uh, should be, there, there's only one size, but people of different ages and sizes should be able to all use them. They are going to be free, even though there is a registration signup procedure that you have to go through and obviously a limited buy. So, um, this is, will speak to our efforts to make our city very accessible for the disabled. And otherwise, uh, the next meeting of the recreation committee will be in January. The, the date has not yet been set and I wish you well. Blinded about the future of our programs.
Very good. Any questions? Yes, sir.
Uh, just a, a comment since the Halloween festival at the, the recreation department. I've had a chance to connect with several, uh, families who have recently relocated to Isle of Palms with, uh, with young children. And, uh, all of them have been absolutely floored with the level and the quality of, uh, community events that the recreation department and the public safety departments. And I know everybody on staff puts together, so just kudos to staff, obviously Norma Jean, especially to you and your team. And, um, we got, we got a great community here. It's, those are the best events and I'm pretty excited for a holiday festival this year. That's all.
Yeah, I, I actually forgot. I should have mentioned the Holiday Street Festival upcoming on December 4th. Uh, we are returning back to our usual, um, with vendors, entertainment, ID of the tree, carnival rides, all that good stuff. Everybody get out there. It'll start at two and go until seven o'clock. But for anybody who wants to stay over, I'm sure the businesses will be happy to have them. Um, it should be a great time.
Santa Claus will be there.
Yes, and Santa, uh, a, a wonderful, uh, Santa that, uh, we, one of our friends, one of our special friends.
A wonder.
Any questions?
Definitely.
Okay. Any questions? My hat's off to the director of fun. Okay, moving on. Personnel.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Personnel committee met at 4:00 PM on Wednesday, November the 10th. All committee members and staff were present. We kicked things off with our old business with considering applications for the, um, appointments to the, uh, planning commission. We had, uh, for this, uh, upcoming cycle, four vacancies. We had technically, I guess you would say seven applicants. Two of those applicants were appointed within the last 12 months. And, um, as such, uh, we, we felt like it was incoming on, on us per the, the informal policy that the, the personnel committee has set to reappoint them as they indicated their interest to remain on those boards. So we were, we interviewed the remaining five applicants for the, to open vacancies. That included one member who has currently served several consecutive, uh, terms, um, Ron Denton, and then several new applicants for the planning commission. I'm going to make a recommendation in the form of motion in a second to appoint. Um, we, the, the personnel committee had a unanimous support for, um, the four candidates that we want to place to those vacancies. Uh, the aforementioned two who were appointed to, uh, to terms less than a year ago. And then, uh, I'll make the motion and I'll give my background. So I'd make a motion that we recommend, or excuse me, that we appoint, uh, Marty Brown, Scott Pierce, Ron Denton and Suzanne Nagelski to the planning commission.
One second.
Okay. We have any questions, discussion?
No, I'll, I'll give my, my, my background. First of all, if you, if you find yourself online and looking for something to do, you should check out the applications and the resumes of the people who are applying for these roles because it's astounding, um, the wealth of knowledge and experience we have on this island. I say that every time, but it doesn't change. Uh, every, every time we have vacancy, it's like, what am I doing up here? And, uh, this was no exception. So we had incredible candidates. The reason why we chose Ron Denton, uh, or, or we're recommending Ron Denton is, uh, the need for continuity on the, the planning commission as well as, um, the level of expertise that he brings that's, was really kind of unparalleled with any of the other applicants in terms of his expertise with construction and construction management. The other candidate, Susan Nagelski, um, she brought a level of research and preparation that again was unparalleled by the other candidates that came to us. And so, you know, in thinking about the planning commission that really operates as sort of a research, special ops for city council, um, her showing that initiative of, hey, I, I know that I'm coming to this interview and I'm doing boatloads of research and coming to you with some thoughts and recommendations. It was just above and beyond what everyone else had done. So that's the reason for those recommendations and I, we hope that you'll accept them.
Any other questions? Eric Dunn, you go.
Councilmember Pounds.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Bell.
Aye.
Councilmember Ramoy.
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman.
Aye.
Councilmember Popson.
Aye.
Mayor Carroll.
Aye.
All in favor?
Good deal. Thanks. We moved on to, uh, an update on the wage and compensation analysis, which we've covered quite well with ways and means. So I'll move on from that and spare us the repeats. Uh, we did talk briefly about the update on the firing chief. I said it again. I did it in committee. It's not the firing chief, it's the fire chief. That's a total different, that's a whole different role.
You can tell who has a new baby.
Oh gosh, all right. When you're reading it and it says fire chief hiring, anyway, come on. I'm going to pass this over to Desiree anyway. Definitely am going to now, but, um, she's leading the show and we just want to make sure that we keep the public and the rest of council informed as to how things are going.
Great. So just an update, um, earlier this, uh, last month, um, we had, um, the folks from the, the Battle Mind Associates conduct focus groups with members of the fire department, with, uh, members of the supervisor group, battalion chiefs and, um, another group with myself, HR and the current interim chief. That feedback was all used for the development of the ad of what we're looking for in our next fire chief. And that ad has been completed and it's posted, um, as of today. We will have the opening, um, and the, um, the process or the period for folks to submit applications, um, through December 19th. Then we will start with the help of the consultants, actually, um, done by the consultants mostly, the first and second screening. And then a skill evaluation process with, where they will be, um, working with retired and current and retired, um, chiefs of fire to work on specific, um, assignments, whether it's creating a budget, making a community presentation, um, also testing their operational skills. That is all scheduled for the last week of January. So we're moving along. We're very excited and hopefully we will, I have no, no doubt that we will have a ton of applicants for us to consider for our department.
Thank you, Desiree. Uh, we, uh, we wrapped the meeting with a discussion of mayor and council member salaries. Uh, and you'll recall, we just voted on, uh, the cell phones. And, and so when we were doing the comparisons of cities, this is where the cell phone, one of the ways that the cell phone issue kind of came up was, as us being different. When you look at our surrounding municipalities and what compensation or perks, for lack of a better word, they provide to council members and the mayor, um, they're kind of all over the place to be, to be honest. Um, you'll have Sullivan's Island and Kiowa that don't really do anything. You got Mal Pleasant, James Island, Folly, that all have three, three to 10x what we do here. And so the question we had, uh, and I'll thank council member Smith for asking us to consider this. She wisely pointed out that with a lot of outgoing council members, if this is something that's going to be done, that typically these types of increases are not very politically.
Smart.
Yeah, thank you. Sometimes it's easier for outgoing council members to, to make these kinds of moves. So we had a lengthy discussion about, about, you know, whether or not this was appropriate. What's, what's the purpose? That's kind of where I ended up is what's the goal in doing this? Even though we're wildly different than everyone else, I couldn't come up with a strong goal and, and ultimately, um, we did not, uh, unanimously, I should say, and I, I speak for council member Buchanan, even though he's not here, I, I think he'd be okay with it. Unanimously said, hey, we don't necessarily want to make any recommendations to council. But we did have a lengthy discussion. We did point out that, hey, we're far below our comparable neighbors. Folly Beach is probably the most comparable. They're about three X what we get. And I, for the public's record, because some people don't know, we do get paid a pretty hefty stipend. We get, um, that's a joke. It's not hefty. We, it's a $1,500 a year stipend plus health insurance, which actually is significant. The stip, the stipend at $1,500 was set at least 22 years ago. Well, no, we didn't know the exact date, but several decade, at least a couple of decades. Um, the health insurance component that, um, every council member up here has the option to get single, um, coverage, is about eight years old. So that, that of course is a more substantial than the $1,500, uh, a year stipend. And, and obviously very much appreciated by some of us up here. I don't know who will take advantage. So anywho, the point being lengthy discussion, no action taken, but, um, that's where we got. Yes, sir.
If I may, I did make one comment because, um, you know, John asked, uh, council member Buchanan, who's served for a long time. You know, had, had there ever been a raise, had there ever, and you know, the answer is no. And I did comment, anyone that understands organizational rising cost of healthcare and thinks that council has not received a raise. I, I don't, and you know, I'm not going to put, um, Debbie Suggs on the spot, but if you look at the, the rising cost of healthcare is astronomical. And I will tell you, as the mayor and I navigate how to get out of the state coverage and into Medicare, you start to understand the significance and, 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 and frankly, the privilege when you sit up here of having that coverage that I will tell you when I ran, I didn't know that, you know, that was part of this incredibly rewarding $1,500 a year package. So, um, I, I, I think we were all, you know, we don't serve for the salaries or the medical coverage. We serve frankly to try to give back something and, you know, I know all those that ran for council are looking at the same thing. And God bless them and Godspeed going forward with this, right? Jimmy's laughing.
Well, I understand on social media we get paid millions, but.
There, there is that.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll speak to, the reason that I suggested it, um, was partly because it did seem like the best time to have an objective vote on it that, um, wouldn't be politically disastrous. But, um, you know, we, it, it's a pretty low salary considering the amount of work that goes into it. And I was, um, looking for something that just made more sense and that also, um, would make more sense for people who aren't necessarily going to benefit from having the health package. Maybe they're spout, maybe they already receive a good health package through their job. So that's really not something that benefits them. But also just makes the sacrifice of time. There are certain people where, um, you know, people with young families, uh, people who are retired where knowing that you're having some, a little more income might make a difference in, in being able to justify to your family the amount of time that you're giving to those positions. So that was my rationale for suggesting it and thank you for considering.
So ends my report.
Okay. Any questions? Eric Dunn, moving on. Real property.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll try to make this as quick as I can tonight. We had, uh, a real property committee meeting at 1:30 PM, Monday, November the first. All council members on the committee were present along with administrator Fregoso, director Carr. We had no citizens comments. We had no marina tenant comments. Uh, we went right into an update on the Marina Dock Rehabilit, Rehabilitation Project, which, uh, administrator Fregoso reported. I won't go into that of, because we've had recent updates on that this evening. And I would like to move on to, uh, our next item was an update on the Marina Restaurant renovation by Marker 116 LLC. And administrator Fregoso said at that time, this was November 1st, that the restaurant construction is in full force. And she referred to a communication from the tenants and the meeting packet that she had that the issue with the elevator needs to be discussed by the committee. And, uh, and we also have bi-weekly construction meetings ongoing with the insight group and the contractor that will continue, obviously. So we have a couple of action items here tonight, uh, anyway, with, uh, real property. And the first one is consideration of requests marker 116 LLC for the city to approve restaurant building plans without an elevator. In our committee, we did have quite a bit of discussion about this. We ended up having a motion made by council member Boy, uh, which we all agreed with unanimously. Uh, and it was a motion to grant the request of marker 116 to approve the modified plans that omit, omit an elevator due to structural and operational challenges. Uh, and so we want to move that forward. So I'd like, in the form of a motion, I would like to make that motion that we grant the request of marker 116 to approve the modified plans that omit an elevator due to the structural and operational challenges. And with all the options that have been exhausted.
Second.
We hear questions?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, um, I'd, I'd like to, if appropriate, time to make an amendment that we do request council to continue to pursue the possibility in concert with working with the restaurant group of in a future date, not to delay the opening of the restaurant, continue to pursue the possibilities of an elevator, uh, perhaps using ATAX money as a funding source, because I don't think we can continue to put this on the backs of a triple net less E. Uh, but that we, you know, we've all, we'd all love to see an elevator. I don't know if it's possible.
Yeah.
A second.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry for rambling. But, but I, I, I think we've all, you know, we're, we'd love to see an elevator in the building. And, you know, I think we've all had individual conversations around, you know, is it practical somewhere down the line to figure out a way cooperatively with the restaurant without, um, you know, without saying, you know, we're not going to proceed right now. Cause I don't think that's fair to the restaurant. I don't think it's fair to the community. However, acknowledge that we're an aging community that would love to see an elevator in that business at some future point. So Desiree, I'm not sure how to write that and, and I know I rambled, but, um, please council, continue to work with the restaurant group.
Yeah, I'd like to offer some more comment here. I did, I did mention the committee meeting and I just wanted to rehash this again also that, uh, you know, early on when the plans were put out there, the conceptual drawings, certainly there was an elevator included. And I know that in working with, uh, the marker 116 group, that they had every intention of putting an elevator in that restaurant where it was placed according to the drawings and where they submitted their, uh, you know, their plans for approval. Uh, because it would have made sense for them too. I mean, it was going to be a construction grade elevator, one that would help them, carry provisions up and down to the upper level, uh, you know, during the, during the early morning hours to get prepped for the, for all the, uh, serving there would be doing later. And, uh, and it also would have accommodated the diners, you know, to get them from not only the, the first level there, which is fully ADA, ADA compliant, but also get them up to that next level. So, uh, you know, there was, there was never in my mind, any thought that they were being misleading in any way by removing the elevator. We had a communication issue there. But, uh, uh, but we discovered that the elevator had been removed. And so then that subsequently, we've had a lot of discussion, a lot of meetings, a lot of people looking at it. I had asked all of council to go out there individually and look at it, tour it with, uh, with the marker 116 group. And I think just about everybody was able to do that. Douglas has been on top of the issue as well. And, uh, it just did not appear to be feasible. Now I know that there, there's been an operational question that came up as to, you know, what kind of what, you know, maybe one possible solution we had was, was, was an outside shaft that would go up to the second level. But Desiree, I, I, I don't know if you wanted to comment on that about the operational issue or what we ran into. Or I know we have part of the marker 116 group here tonight, maybe one of them would want to comment on it.
Yeah, I would, I would recommend that because I, I don't know how to operate restaurants.
Would, uh, uh, okay. So we'll, we'll recognize Dave, Dave Lorenz from the marker 116 group. If you come to the microphone and give us a little more background on that.
How you doing? So hearing about your stipend, um, you know, we are hiring down.
Some of those will be unemployed.
Come down and fly. That'd be great. Come down and apply. That'd be great.
What's the hour?
Yeah, long hours. But, um, so, you know, I guess like you said, we, we are, we tried a lot to try to figure it out. And, and really the elevator in the first part was for us operationally to move, you know, food upstairs where you have a prep kitchen and all that kind of stuff. And then it would also be used obviously for, um, customers. So, you know, through the process, we found out that it just wasn't fitting in the area that we originally drew. The, the architect actually came back and admitted to that, you know, the, oh, kind of screwed up on a firewall issue and it created challenges. So, you know, we've been working on this for months, looking at, could we do this or could we do that? And, and we even had, you know, things that would go up the side of stairs and a seat and all this to just move people up and down. And, um, it just came into problems, you know, operationally. And, you know, the big part was a lot of these pieces of equipment are not commercially rated. And so there you void your warranties and all this kind of stuff. So that's kind of been the big issue. Um, the outside, you know, is kind of the same thing. It's a, we looked at, could there be an outside shaft that goes up, um, and the height was a problem? And then it just turned into some of the stuff that was, um, you know, just not commercially rated. And we can't put it uncommercially rated into a building that an elevator that's going to be used three hundred times, you know, a day versus a residential one that gets three times a week, you know, there totally two differences there. So that's what we've run into. We've continued to kind of look and been open Douglas and Desiree and, and even the council having y'all down and look at it and stuff like that. So, you know, um, we're, we're still trying. So, you know, I think that's, that's the, the tough part. I will say, um, you know, we have done a lot of improvements, uh, that weren't on the plans as well, uh, which is great. You know, this is more for everybody that's kind of going down there and looking at it and saying, well, is anything happening? They were putting a new metal roof on that wasn't our initial budget and plans. Um, we spray foamed way more of the building that we thought we were going to, which is just going to be better for the building. Again, we're residents. So this is our building as well as everyone's here. Um, you know, we, we fixed the ramp at the front, which really didn't need it, but we started getting into it. And we thought, you know, let's go ahead and just do all that. Um, so we've done a lot of other extra things to the building, which I think is just going to make it last and be more operational, you know, sound for, for the city and for us as well. So. Any questions?
I have a question. And you and I talked about this. Um, you didn't build a new building. You got an existing building. You got an existing building that had a lot more problems than you thought you had. I also asked you about your restaurant on Sullivan Zone, an existing building. And you don't have an elevator over here because it wasn't designed for it. And myself, I have an existing building. It's three stories. That was not designed for an elevator. Um, that's the problem is when you run into an old building as opposed to building a whole new building from scratch. So, I mean, you run into all kinds of obstacles all the way through.
Yeah. Renovation is surprise after surprise.
So I, I understand where you're coming from and, you know, it's a bit of a challenge and I appreciate everything you did to try to work it in. And I like what Randy said as for a future idea.
Just one question. When are we going to have a name for this restaurant?
Soon. We have it.
Well, I figured you did. I don't blame you.
Any other questions?
Is it dinner time? Everybody's like, it's going to be good. It's good.
Way off. We're just talking about.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Dave. I do want to make, uh, one more comment before I turn it over to anybody else who maybe want to comment. I, I do agree with the amendment that Councilmember Bell placed. And, uh, I really think with us reserving the, uh, possibility and option for an elevator going forward, working that out somehow, some way would be great. Uh, we all know that we have a resolution in place that we put in place a few months ago now, um, in regards to how we want to go over and above ADA compliance on this island and everything that we do. And that would just fit with that theme going forward if we're able to work, make that happen. So, um, that's my comments. I don't know if anyone else has some before we.
Okay.
We're voting on the.
For the amendment.
We're going on the motion to amend to include count, to include a request by Councilmember Bell to encourage a future council to pursue elevator at the new restaurant. Good? Short version?
With the potential of using ATAX dollars.
Does everybody click? Nicole.
Councilmember Pounds.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Bell.
Aye.
Councilmember Moy.
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman.
Aye.
Councilmember Popson.
Aye.
Mayor Carroll.
Aye.
All in favor.
Thank you.
You want to vote on the motion as amended? Anybody else?
Would you remind everybody with the motion?
The motion is to grant the request of Marker One Sixteen, uh, to approve amended plans. Is that? Amended plans without the elevator. And now to include the amendment encouraging council, future council to pursue the elevator option with ATAX dollars.
Good job.
It'll be written much more gracefully than that. Councilmember Pounds.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Bell.
Aye.
Councilmember Moy.
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman.
Aye.
Councilmember Popson.
Aye.
Mayor Carroll.
Aye.
All in favor.
All right. Now, where was I?
At a D.
Let's see. Okay. The next item that we discussed, uh, was consideration of the noise control agreement, Marker One Sixteen LLC. And that is still out, uh, to be decided at some point. So that will be after the first of the year before we take that up again. But that is in their hands and I'm sure that they have that with their, with, uh, their legal team looking that over. We had an update on the proposed public dock green space at the Isle of Pavers Marina. And Administrator Fragoso said she had received a proposal from Davis and Floyd for the development of bid specif- specification for the green space area. And that was just short of nine thousand dollars. Uh, you know, so we're taking a look at that, looking at, uh, uh, the scope of work for cleaning up the public dock. Uh, had a, quite a few, you know, next steps in regards to that in, in, and also of course, you know, we still have an issue there with the public space. I mean, the public dock and green space is still not in our hands. So that's an ongoing issue that we'll have to deal with going forward as well. Uh, we had an update on ADA beach access improvements. And, uh, Director Carr had said the Moby Matt at the Forty Second Avenue Beach Access has been extended as far as it can and still be in compliance. And, uh, so that's been, been done. It's under a regular maintenance plan with the city's landscape contractor. Uh, we've got design plans for thirty-four A beach access are underway and expected in the first quarter of twenty twenty-two, and it should go out to bid sometime next year. Uh, we're also looking into the issues at the Twenty First Avenue Beach Access Path. And that one's a, a bit of a struggle there because that one's kind of a complicated issue, but, uh, Douglas and our team are looking at it, see what we could do to make that, uh, certainly more accessible. And, uh, Assistant Director Acero, according to Douglas Carr, has been working on the Ninth Avenue Beach Access, which has a problem of a cliff or scarping that keeps building and recycling because we all know down the center of the island here is more, much more dynamic. So we talked about updates in regards to O C M, O C R M in, uh, in regards to extending Moby Matt even beyond the seaward toe of the dunes, of the primary dune. And that's still a work in progress. Also, we've had some communication that this is mainly with our point person, Director Carr with, uh, Matt Slago, who I think is their conservation manager, I think is his title or something like that. So we've been working through him to see what kind of willingness there would be for O C R M to allow us to take the mats even further. And, uh, you know, that's again, a work in progress. We'd considered working with Representative Joe Bustos to prefile some legislation, but we're holding off on that till we see how these conversations work out with O C R M. And, uh, more later on that. We, under new business, we had a discussion of shared parking at the Marina. And, uh, I had mentioned as Chair of Real Property, uh, for this past year, uh, that I would like to see us have that remain on the Real Property Committee agenda going forward until we have some sort of conclusion and solution about, uh, free parking at the Marina for residents. And, you know, not knowing what our real property committee is going to look like in terms of who's on the committee or that sort of thing. Just wanted to make sure it's on there. And that we're, you know, the next committee would be able to take that up, take that off, uh, take that up. I'm sorry. And then, uh, Councilmember Moy made the, uh, made the point that, uh, you know, for years we've talked about it, but really they have got, never really have gotten a, what we consider a really definitive legal opinion. And, uh, you know, and it may be what we ought to do is challenge our legal team and say, here's what we want as a council. And as a staff, and we want our residents to enjoy free parking at the Marina. And, uh, see what we have to do from a legal perspective and in collaboration with the tenants to make that happen. So anyway, more later on that as well. And we talked about discussion and consideration of eligible projects for Charleston County Green Belt programs for fiscal year twenty-two with winter funding cycle. And that is an action item for consideration here tonight also. And I'll, Desiree, do you want to give us a little background on the green belt funds and what this would be for before we make the action?
Yes, um, the green belt funding, we have applied before, um, because we are a coastal community, we have a little bit more flexibility on how we can spend those dollars. Um, the city gets about maybe ninety to ninety-five thousand dollars a year from the half penny sales tax that was passed by referendum. We're on the second round of that. Um, the funds that the city received for the first round, the first referendum, the city used to purchase the Carmen Arbunch Park. Um, for this second round, we currently have about two hundred and forty-six thousand dollars that are available to the city. You all recall that last year, the city made a recommendation to use a, a portion of the city's application for the elevated boardwalk of Forty Second Avenue. But since, you know, working through that for about a year, we decided, council decided not to pursue that, um, right now. So the winter funding opens up. It's actually open now. We, we have applications due by the end of January. Um, so the city has an opportunity to submit, um, additional projects to, for the use of that money. That money is still the city's. They just verify that, that we're requesting it for, um, an eligible activity. And, um, there were two projects that were discussed at the Real Property Committee that the city could do. Um, one is thirty-four A, which has already been decided by this, by this body for the city to pursue and make it an ADA handicap, um, access with the addition of potentially handicap parking spaces along Palm Boulevard, very similar to Twenty First Avenue. Um, another point that was discussed at the, another project, potential project, um, that was discussed at the Real Property Committee meeting would be, um, the proposed public dock that, um, the city, uh, plans for at the Marina once, um, the city is able to complete the eviction proceedings with, um, tidal wave watersports, um, the holdover tenant there. So, um, after some consultation with, um, our attorneys, I think the, the recommendation would be from, from staff that we hold off on applying for, um, funding for the public dock at this time because that, that issue has not yet been resolved. Um, there will be a spring funding, um, uh, 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 funding, um, cycle in the spring that the city could still apply for in the event that, that we're successful in getting that issue resolved. Um, the requirements that the city would have to meet with existing infrastructure and existing areas um, would be placing the location or the improvement in a conservation easement for it to be protected in perpetuity. So I think that that was part of the reason that, that it was discussed at Real Property is the public dock being something that, um, would be of interest for this council to, um, protect. There are still ways that the county that, you know, with, working with the county, you can undo that. For example, if the city decided to do something else, um, we just need to have authority from the board of the, the Greenbelt Board and, and County Council, but it's certainly an option. Um, I think that for the upcoming winter cycle, we would, we would recommend that we move forward with thirty-four A and then hold off on the public dock until the, maybe the spring cycle because of pending litigation.
Okay. Well, I'll go ahead and make that in the form of a motion that we go ahead and draft, uh, proposal for funding the thirty-four A beach access walkover path.
Second.
And it would be an ADA compliant.
Absolutely.
Right? I think so too.
Whisper.
Yes, sir.
Okay, discussion.
Does that, um, help with, uh, flooding issues or at thirty-four?
Yes.
A will be also addressing flooding issues.
That's correct. Yes.
There's a lot of standing water down here. Any, Aaron Dunn, Nicole?
Councilmember Pounds.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Bell.
Aye.
Councilmember Moy.
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman.
Aye.
Councilmember Popson.
Aye.
Mayor Carroll.
Aye.
All in favor.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see. Uh, that is really it. Other than we will have a meeting in January, the Real Property Committee will. There's some date to be announced at a later time. So, so ends my report, Mr. Mayor.
Great report. Any questions? Aaron Dunn, let's move on. Reports from city officers, boards, commissions, board of zoning appeals. All I've got is next meeting on November four, seventeen. That's today.
They just met.
And we have no minutes from now. Um, planning commission, minutes are attached. If you can go on IOP.net and find them. Uh, accommodations tax committee. Um, again, they just met and we don't have the minute from that right now. So continue on environmental advisor committee. Um, again, um, nothing but, does it give us just a brief overview of the first meeting went?
We, we did that last month.
Okay.
But we are very excited to be holding the meet, next meeting is tomorrow. And the committee will be meeting here at four o'clock. Um, we have public comment available. I know that there, there's already somebody signed up to, to talk to the new advisory board. Um, and tomorrow on their agenda, they're going to be, um, selecting a top, top three of their priorities that they want to work on for the next um, few years. So a lot of, a lot of exciting things going to happen tomorrow, I believe.
This is exciting because Al Ponds has led the way when it comes to our environment.
Yeah.
This committee is pretty cool. Okay, moving on to, um, reports from special joint committees, none. Potitions received, referred, disposed of, none. Bills already in possession of council ordinance twenty twenty-one dash thirteen. And ordinance to allow year-round surfing instruction on the beach with certain conditions.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion.
I, I would recommend if the motion could be, um, motion to approve as amended because this, this, um, ordinance that you have in front of you has two changes from your first reading. It includes the recommendations that were made at the recreation committee. Um, and those changes include, um, limiting the group of folks that can be, um, at one time on the beach, taking surfing lessons from a maximum of twelve to a maximum of eight. And the maximum amount of hours per day per provider has increased from two to four.
Friendly amendment? Motion to approve as amended.
Correct.
Okay. Very second.
There was.
Okay. Any other questions? Aaron Dunn, Nicole?
Councilmember Pounds.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Bell.
Aye.
Councilmember Moy.
Aye.
Councilmember Streetman.
Aye.
Councilmember Popson.
Aye.
Mayor Carroll.
Aye.
All in favor.
Thank you very much. Ordinance twenty twenty-one fourteen and ordinance provided for the standardization of the business license process. I just, I know you were just itching to get up there like basketball last night.
Business license standardization. What I love. Um, this is second reading of, um, this ordinance, this is getting you aligned with getting our ordinances aligned with the, uh, state business license, uh, standardization act. You're, you're, you're now kind of six months into this process. It's been an evolution of getting all of these dates aligned. Uh, I would note that this version, uh, has amendments that are coming as a result of the municipal association having reviewed both our rates. So there's an adjustment of rates in there to be sure that uh, this process is not generating a windfall, a financial windfall for the city. So they've, they've basically looked at where uh, businesses would be changing in classifications and they've made the rates such that if it was the identical revenue from the identical businesses, that it would all come out to be exactly the same as, uh, years prior. Um, and the other thing is we have added an index that would allow, uh, that gives guidance or, or gen- it requires which businesses would be in which classifications under our code. So this is kind of the last pass of that. We have to have this done. We have to be in, in compliance by January first. So this would be the last step of that process.
Okay. Motion to approve.
Second.
As amended.
As amended.
And waive the reading. And waive the reading.
Second, second, second.
Councilor Pounds? Councilor Smith? Councilor Bell? Councilmember Moy? Councilwoman Streetman? Councilwoman Popson? Mayor Carroll? All in favor?
Thank you very much. Ordinance twenty twenty one fifteen in order to temporarily suspend enforcement of title three, chapter four environmentally acceptable packaging and products for the businesses affected by the global supply chain i- issues due to COVID nineteen pandemic. Do you hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. I'd like to make an amendment before we go through the one act. An amendment would be to temporarily suspend the provisions of title three, chapter four, specific to section three dash four dash six subsection A, not including single use plastic bags for six months. So really this has to do with plastic bags on the beach.
Second.
And discussions on the amendment.
So that amendment essentially, if you don't mind. The amendment will mean that the temporary suspension, rather than applying to the whole chapter, um, will only apply to the section where businesses are required to, um, provide recyclable products and single use plastic bags. Um, will not be, are not able to distribute or use those materials, um, in their businesses. However, a portion of chapter four also includes, um, the prohibition for individual people, what they can bring to the beach. So I think that your, your amendment deals with just the suspension on the businesses. But these materials, styrofoam products, single, single use plastic bags, plastic straws, stirs will still be prohibited on the beach.
We were first in two thousand and fifteen to do this and I'm proud of all of our bonds what we gave. Mr. Popson?
So how, how does this, how, how does this affect the, the businesses down the front beach?
But businesses, we're allowing them to use these products.
Any business, anywhere.
We're just protecting the beach. That's all this is about is the businesses that can still use these products. But we're trying to protect the beach.
The, the committee did recommend, and I think that's reflected that single use plastic bags will continue to be prohibited. And even by use of the businesses, yes.
Desiree, we good with that?
Yes, that your amendment
Yes.
excludes single use plastic bags from the temporary suspension.
Uh, the, the, um, the, excuse me, the ordinance in the package doesn't include a date or the, a period.
The public works committee made a recommendation for it to be suspended for six months.
Was that, I, was that in the motion or does it need to be?
It was in the mayor's amendment. So what this means for all of our city businesses is they will have some flexibility on using to go packaging that is of, of plat, you know, plastic to go packaging or styrofoam packaging as well, which I think it's easier to obtain, less costly. And they've had issues with, um, supply, supply, supply chain, um, worldwide. Um, I used to say chain supply until John corrected me. I know. So yes, I think that they'll appreciate this. This is something that I know that they have, um, reached out to a lot of you all about considering. So we'll make sure that they're notified. And, um, again, I think they'll appreciate it.
Okay.
And I'll just say, I think it's worth noting that, um, there are other communities that have similar prohibitions. They've not entertained uh, lifting these or suspending them for their businesses. So, so we are unique in that perspective and, and trying to work with our businesses and, and give them some more freedom in that regard. So this is a, a pro business move, but at the same time respecting that we don't want those materials to be going out onto the beach. And a reminder that, um, we really need our citizens to be mindful of what they're taking on the beach and, uh, not take items like especially styrofoam coolers and takeout containers are some of the worst polluting, um, pollutants that you can take out there because of the damage that they do to the environment. Um, so I think that's.
Okay, anyone else? Nicole on the amendment.
On the amendment, Councilmember Pounds? Councilmember Smith? Councilmember Bell? Councilmember Moy? Councilwoman Streetman? Councilwoman Popson? Mayor Carroll? All in favor?
Thank you. Back to the original.
Motion as amended. Councilmember Pounds?
Waive the reading.
And waive the reading. Councilwoman Smith? Councilwoman Bell? Councilmember Moy? Councilwoman Streetman? Councilwoman Popson? Mayor Carroll? All in favor?
Thank you very much. Moving on, item nine, introduction of new bills, resolution proclamations. First reading ordinance twenty twenty one sixteen in ordinance to include restrictions of vicious and dangerous dogs.
So moved.
Second.
Second, discussion.
We discuss on first reading?
No, we don't discuss. I'm sorry. Sitting there moving right along here.
You can, but you may not.
Yeah, I think we can do that for the next council.
Councilmember Pounds? Councilwoman Smith? Councilwoman Bell? Councilwoman Moy? Councilwoman Streetman? Councilwoman Popson? Mayor Carroll? All in favor?
Thank you very much. Next one is a resolution authorized into consumption of beer and wine only, amplified music and street closure for the holiday street festival on Saturday, December fourth.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? Nicole?
Councilor Pounds? Councilwoman Smith? Councilwoman Bell? Councilwoman Moy? Councilwoman Streetman? Councilmember Popson? Mayor Carroll? All in favor?
Thank you very much. God, I'm going to miss this one terribly. Next meeting, record meeting, six P M, Tuesday, January twenty fifth, twenty twenty two. Sorry, I won't be here. Do I hear a motion in accordance with South Carolina code section thirty dash four dash seventy A two to receive a legal update and advice in regard to tidal wave watersports eviction proceedings? No decisions will be made and upon returning to open session, council may or may not take action on a matter discussed in executive session.
So moved. Second.
Councilmember Pounds? Councilmember Smith? Councilwoman Bell? Councilwoman Moy? Councilwoman Streetman? Councilwoman Popson? Mayor Carroll? All in favor?
Thank you.
You're off record at seven thirty nine.
Everyone, thank y'all for coming. If you want to stay and hear what we do after it, that's fine. Um, this is not our favorite time of the night. And we made the first move.